Like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for what's today is today Wednesday, March nineteenth. Um, welcome Sarah is our clerk. Will you call the role?
Yes, uh, Clark.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
He's sitting here. Uh, Sammy.
Here.
Anderson.
Here. Okay, um, any changes to the agenda adding or subtracting or moving? All right, that takes us to the first public comment. Uh, this is for things that are on the agenda only. Uh, I have three minutes. Uh, anyone in the room wish to make a comment? Please come to the podium. Yeah, you can have three minutes. Come to the podium, introduce yourself. Uh, with your name and where you live and then you have three minutes to talk.
My name's Brad Johnson. And I live in Ganges.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm here to try and get the form. I think that's what you are, right? I never.
City Council, yeah.
Never done this before, but to realize all the holidays. For the military and you, you don't represent none of them.
Um, so this comment period is for things that are on our agenda and that's not on our agenda for this evening or this afternoon. Um, but we have another pub- public comment period at the end of the meeting where you can talk about anything. Are you able to stay through the meeting and then talk at the end?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks. Appreciate it. It's just sort of how we set this up. Okay. Anyone, uh, anyone in the room, Kevin?
Yeah.
Good, I'm sorry.
In case I run out of time. I just made a copy of it. Um, Kevin Tringali, uh, Belavita Vacation Rentals, one thirty-three Butler Street. And this is in regards to one of our properties, three oh four Lucy Street. So, um, for the past eighteen years, I've been a proud owner of Belavita. Uh, throughout these years, the STR industry has experienced exponential growth. The US short-term rental industry, um, is an estimated sixty-eight million dollars in twenty-four and is projected to continue to grow. And the desire among these travelers for this unique and personalized experience drives this demand for short-term rentals, which is, you know, really why we're at this point. Uh, Sagatuck's been overwhelmed by its growth and we're trying to find a balance that appeases both the full-time residents and the tens of thousands of travelers that also want to enjoy our area, that also pour in millions of dollars into our economy. And I get it, I really do. Uh, matter of fact, not so long ago, I sat with many of you on the Short Term Task Force Committee, trying to find common ground, be compliant neighborly and blend our community amongst our travelers as best as possible. But I come to you today for asking for grace for three oh four Lucy. Is this particular circumstance is not about the what, it's not about the quit claim, but it's more so about an oversight on both sides, the city and myself and the property and the poor timing of its annual fire inspection. And let me explain why. We proudly represent this property. It's been a family that's been here for fifty-four years. It's a modest, pet-friendly little cottage that resides on the fringe of the business district and has been thoroughly enjoyed by many pet lover travelers. Not too long ago, we had a difficult conversation with this family. Um, the place needed some work and we could no longer represent it until that work was done. He's an aging, uh, man. Matter of fact, he's ninety-five years old. And he recognized between living in the UP and being his age, this was more than he could handle. And he handed it over to his grandkids in December of twenty twenty-three, nine months prior to the cap regulations. I think you'd all agree this was the right thing to do for both the city and for this family to keep this property in good shape and, uh, and for the family. This was the right thing to do, nine months prior. This is not about pulling a fast one. It's not about turning an application in late. It's not even about the quit claim. This is simply an oversight. This was like this for nine months, two hundred and seventy days. We sat there. From December of twenty-three to August of twenty-four, my office is literally fifty steps away. If this was brought to my attention in any way, shape or form, I would have gladly brought over the reapplication fee and this would be not even an issue. We wouldn't even be having this conversation. And with all due respect, for many of my eighteen years here, the, the city was in the weeds when it came to the rental properties, okay? Inspections were late, checks were lost. Um, I had a fire inspector once tell me, hey, we're not worried about you. You're always very compliant. We'll get to it, we'll get to it. So it was loosely governed and to be loosely governed to now hard line in the stand, uh, sand, um, especially over these nine months deserves some transition time and consideration. Okay. And the other thing was just the poor timing that it was due in January. If this was due in August, you know, again, this would have been a non-issue. So there's been some, a handful of properties in the crosshairs of this transition. This is one of them. This family's done everything the right way. Um, you know, it was an oversight and we ask that you have some grace on this family and allow them to continue to, to be good rental owners as they have been.
Thanks.
All this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
I'm online. Could I speak for female?
We have one person coming up to the podium in the room and then we'll get to you after he's finished.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Tom Glass. I'm a former president of Sergeant Sbrin and current council member there. And I'd like to address the no wake zone, uh, specifically some of the comments that, um, that you guys received from local, uh, local authorities. Um, the first, uh, first comments I'd like to address were from, uh, Todd Wagner from the Sheriff's Office. Um, he commented that perhaps extending the no wake zone from five hundred feet to two hundred and forty feet would help. Um, the worst problem with the no wake zone is where people power up and power down, I mean, in and out of the, uh, the no wake zone. Those are the most significant wakes. Um, and the no wake zone is about a thousand feet from our docks and those waves make it all the way to our dock. Um, so extending it to five hundred feet, I don't think it would be much help. Um, I disagree that tubing and water skiing is a big draw uh, for tourism in the Sagatuck area. I'm out there all the time. I think I see like one pontoon boat that's constantly doing circles around the lake. There are not a lot of water skiers or tubers on the lake. Um, another comment. Uh, he states that the extended travel times may, uh, cause boaters to be impatient. They're already coming in from Lake Michigan. That's a twenty to thirty minute run. It's only an additional five minutes to get across the lake. Uh, he almost makes a, he also makes a comment, excuse me, that, uh, there's limited marine enforcement and that they would be in difficult to enforce a no wake zone that are even as a red herring. Based on that logic, the current restrictions shouldn't be in place anywhere in the lake if they can't enforce it. It's no different than having the speed limit on the road. There are cops there all the time, but we still let speed limits. Uh, to Deputy Chief, uh, Chris Mantle's comments. Um, I disagree that it's tubing again, same thing. The primary cause is vessels powering up and powering down. The comments from Coral Gables stated they do not believe that the no wake is an issue. They're not in the no, they're not in the wake zone. Their entire marina is within the no wake zone, so they wouldn't have any issues. Um, in closing, I urge council to draft a resolution requesting local water draft control and hold a public hearing on the issue. Thanks for your consideration.
Thanks so much. Anyone else in the room wish to make a public comment? Okay, let's go to, um, the guy on Zoom. Um, first two initials CK, you spoke a minute ago.
Yes, thank you very much. And I want to thank you all for coming together and actually giving me an opportunity to speak here. Uh, my name is.
Provide us with your name and where you live.
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Kristof Classic and I'm property owner at seven eight one Manchester. Um, and that property, um, has gone through a quit, uh, claim, uh, deed back in twenty twenty-three, in June of twenty twenty-three. Um, now, um, I understand, you know, the changes in rules. What happened in my, my specific case is that in July sixteen of last year, I actually had an open heart surgery and I was out for quite a long time. You know, from being prevented really from being able to understand what's going on. Um, and I didn't connect the dots together and partially, you know, it's, it's my fault. Um, what, you know, happened with this specific property is one of the owners was removed from the title of the property. Um, and just recently I've learned that I cannot reapply or I cannot be granted the, the license for renewing of the short-term lease. And we will certainly, um, reapply, uh, for that and we will certainly, you know, um, try to execute the waiver. But I would, um, ask you to please consider, uh, specific cases like that. Um, where really for no fault that anyone's, um, on anyone's side, you know, things slip through. And again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, uh, on Zoom that would like to speak? There, do you see anybody?
Yeah.
Okay. And last chance, anyone in the room? All right. We'll close the public comment period and move on to item five, discussion items. First one is, uh, the ordinance for the Michigan Gas Utilities Corporation franchise agreement. Ryan, you pick that off?
Certainly, Mayor, and then good afternoon, uh, city council members. Um, so back in the, the mid nineties, nineteen ninety-four, uh, the council approved a thirty-year franchise, uh, uh, agreement for Michigan Gas Utilities to use your highways, streets, alleys and other public places of the city. And so, uh, now that that's expired, uh, Michigan Gas has approached with a petition and request for another thirty-year franchise agreement. So before you, uh, is, uh, some agreement language that, uh, both, uh, Michigan Gas's legal counsel and our legal counsel have reviewed and are comfortable with. Um, you know, it's not, not exclusive, but allows them to continue to use, uh, the rights of way. Um, clarifies that, you know, there's still a permitting process that they have to follow, which, um, you know, we've, we've been working on that the last couple of years and, and hasn't, and kind of smoothed that out, uh, cleaned up some indemnification language. Um, and, um, some other kind of minor clarification. So, um, your, your city, uh, charter, apologize for my typo there and, uh, my memo, um, does allow for, uh, this type of a franchise to be granted for up to thirty years. So, so that's recommendation is to, uh, to approve.
Great. Any questions, Chris and Mayor? Thank you. Uh, have there been any issues over the last thirty years with the gas company? Things that happened that didn't work out well or?
Yeah, there's been some times when, uh, well, one, there were some concerns, uh, when I had first come here with kind of some communication and knowing when they were actually going to open up the street and, and needed to do some work. And so we've, uh, since kind of clarified with them that, hey, there's still a permit process you need to go through and let us know. So our engineer and, and our department of public works can review and know when you're doing work. Um, and then we've had some occasions when, uh, we were, you know, hopeful that the road would be restored, maybe a little faster than it, than it has been. But at the same time, I think they've been very responsive when we have reached out and, um, very responsive to our concerns and addressing them.
On page seven, um, it has section four rates established by the Michigan Public Service. What do we charge them? The rates to be charged by the grantee, not us.
Right. So we, we don't set gas rates and then the, uh, yeah, my understanding is that, that, that state entity is, is the one that's responsible for approving their rate increase requests.
And then could you explain a little bit, section six, talking about a three-fifths majority of electors voting upon the question? What, what does that, what would they be voting on? I couldn't quite understand it.
Whether or not to issue this, this franchise or not.
They could take it away. We, they could make it go away if there, if it was, went to an election of the whole city?
Right. So if the voters were concerned about you issuing this franchise to Michigan Gas and didn't want to allow for it, there's a mechanism for them to.
Has to go to public vote and.
Right, and Jake.
Win.
Right. Yeah.
So the way it works is actually, this is a revocable franchise, so it is revocable at the will of the city. The only way it becomes irrevocable, um, is through a vote of the people as set forth in section six. So it wouldn't be that they have the ability to revoke this franchise. It's that they essentially have the ability to render this franchise irrevocable when the city council gets put to an election.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a, that's a requirement under state law for franchise losses granted by municipality.
Thank you. That's all. Great. Any other questions for us?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, good afternoon, everybody. Um, so a few things, I do appreciate the bullet points that were in the memo regarding, uh, appears to be some changes that have been recommended, um, especially the, um, the notice regarding if there's any relocation of Michigan Gas Utilities, this should be at their expense because we're going to have some projects over the next thirty years. I'm sure they're going to maybe impact that. So that's important to see that as well as the indemnification. Um, this may be a facetious question, but, but what if we don't grant them the franchise? I mean, frankly, what happens? Just said more as a, you know, we don't have another gas utility.
Right.
That could step in and MG plays. More of a, just a rhetorical question, I guess is probably a better way to put it. I mean, really, what's the risk of not having a franchise? And I'm not saying I'm, I haven't supported this. I'm just, I'm asking from a.
The lights go dark.
Yeah, we, we chose not to renew and they continue to have.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think as a practical matter, if there's no one else offering gas service, that would be a pretty unthinkable option. Um, I understand there is an existing gas franchise, um, that's set to expire. Is that correct, Ryan?
It actually has expired, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And so when a franchise expires, the, the utility is allowed to continue providing services under that expired franchise essentially for an indefinite period of time. Um, there is a line of cases out there that says, once the franchise expires or is revoked, a municipality can order the utility company to remove all of their facilities from the public right-of-way. Um, but that's only happened once or twice in very extreme circumstances. I wouldn't particularly recommend doing that.
Um, thank you for answering the question. The other, uh, the other question I have, and maybe I missed it in reviewing the agreement, is in the event that Michigan Gas Utilities is purchased or sold, uh, what, to what extent does the city have any input on that process? If they were to go away essentially as a corporate entity? And I don't see that as being likely because they've been around for a long time, but.
Yeah, those are their successors and, uh, signs.
Yeah, that's under section.
Yep.
Yeah, I must have missed it. Okay. No, I, I, I support the change that being made. I think there's some good points that are being added to it. Um, after thirty years of experience, we've obviously learned a couple of things.
Yep, yep, certainly.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, this will be on the, uh, agenda on Monday. Okay, that takes us to, um, the pavement markings agreement. Scott?
Hey, good evening. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I'm, uh, so pleased to see this so high up on the, uh, the agenda. So thank you for that consideration. Um, just real, this is pretty straightforward, but, um, if, if this does get approved, it might be a few years before we discuss it again. So I'll elaborate a little bit on it. Um, feel free to fire away with any questions that you might have. But, uh, going back a few years, um, you know, painting the streets was somewhat of a blended service that Public Works would do in combination with, uh, the company, it was called Accurate Striping at the time. Um, Accurate Striping, uh, is no longer in business, or at least the owner at that time was not in business. And so we, we kind of reevaluated the way that we do things. Um, during that time too, you know, services from Public Works doesn't seem to be decreasing, uh, at any sort of rate. Um, so we're like, how can we possibly free up some time, uh, so that we can, uh, make ourselves more available for other services? And so we explored the avenue of contracting the service out. Um, and you know, this is, this being an annual routine maintenance item, uh, we did, you know, we did contract it out the past couple of years. Um, but we're like, you know, we have to go through our, our process every single year, you know, go through the bidding process. It's kind of time-consuming and expensive for such a routine item. So for this year, we're presenting the idea of, uh, having a three-year contract and just lumping this in. So this is on autopilot for the next few years. So, um, F and V, when, when we thought that we were going to start contracting this out, um, F and V and Public Works worked on, um, you know, just getting an inventory, putting those bid specs together. Um, so measuring all the, the, you know, the parking space lines, the center lines, how many linear feet of all this do we have? So we have that compiled onto an inventory list and then we're able to put it out for bid. Um, this was put out for bid two times this, the spring. Uh, the first time, it may have been a little too early. I'm not sure if people didn't see it, but we didn't get any bids. And so we got a little nervous about that. Uh, we did try to make our, our bid package a little more enticing. The first round, uh, we had a hard line of Memorial Day as being the completion date. Um, you know, my experience with this and is, you know, Public Works, we do this too. We always are in this huge rush, you know, to try to get every single thing in before Memorial Day, which is ideal. But if we can't, you know, the reality is June, you know, is still a pretty good month for getting stuff done too. And so, uh, we did allow, um, the contractor to, to complete the work through. If you remember, if it's mid-June or the end of June, but one of which, um, and I don't foresee that to be a problem at all because Public Works, when we did this in combination with Accurate Striping, sometimes this took us, you know, two, two, three months in the summertime. And so, um, you know, the, the people that do this work, they generally know going in early is your, is your friend. Before town is busy, it's quick drying paint. It's, it's just, um, kind of in and out. And we try to be as invisible as, as impossible or as invisible as possible. So, um, so we did get two bids. Uh, the first was from Advanced Payment Markings in the amount of eighty-one thousand, eighty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. And the second was from Ace Parking Lot Striping for the amount of a hundred and six thousand, nine twenty-four. Um, so pretty big price difference between the two. So, uh, Fleas and Vanderbrink and Public Works are making the recommendation to, uh, proceed with, um, advanced payment markings. So if there's any questions, by all means.
Uh, Gregory.
Yeah, um, yeah, we had Ace do it last year, I remember, right? Yeah. And how much was that last year? Do you have that number off the pan?
I think it was like thirty-two thousand.
For the one year?
For the one year.
Yeah. And, and that covered everything that we had striped here, everything that we needed and?
Everything, you know, this is kind of a, a tricky one. There were some very minor things that we expected. You know, if, if the contractor comes into town and they get everything done, but there's like two parking spots that they couldn't get because there was a car parked there, you know, Public Works, we still do, um, have our paint machine and we're fully, uh, prepared to do that kind of stuff. And, and I kind of think of that too for like the, the expanded outdoor dining areas. You know, like when those things are removed off of the street, then Public Works can go back in and touch those spots up too. So.
Right.
Um, but, um, yeah.
And then also, um, APM, we, have we ever worked with them before?
And we have, I have not. Um, they have, um, we did a background check on it or Fleas and Vanderbrink did a background check. They have great reviews. Um, so there's really no, nothing indicating that they wouldn't do a great job.
Okay.
At this point, so.
Thank you.
Uh, the only other exception to, uh, back to your, your last question is, um, the Rainbow Crosswalks, those are not part of this. Uh, that'll be its own separate, um, project, if you will. So, and typically we try to do that before, you know, June for Pride Month.
Right.
Other questions, Chris? A, a separate project for you or for somebody?
That's contracted out. Yep. So Douglas has, has a similar setup and so we both use the same contractor. So it's consistent, it's the same colors, um, and they're, they were able to do it quick. I was surprised last year, I walked out of one of the, the, the businesses and they were painting that in like the middle of the day and successfully, uh, you know, working through it with traffic and everything and, and it, it worked.
Thank you. Any other questions? Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Uh, Scott, welcome. Glad you're here. Um, so during the year, and I think the, you've probably already answered this question during the year. If there's a spot that needs some help, you've got the equipment on, you don't have to call APM back to have them come and take care of it. If it's a, an immediate need, that's something that the DPW can do, right?
Yeah, we, we have a, a Graco line laser paint machine, uh, that we can.
It was in a parade a couple of years ago, you remember?
It was, yeah, good memory. That was hilarious.
Um, in terms of the, uh, excuse me, is, in terms of prioritization, I think you probably prioritize to make sure you get the downtown area first and then expand out from there. You mentioned the expanded outdoor dining. I know that, that has kind of waned in terms of the businesses that participate. But I know last year, we ran into some issues where they didn't get painted before those got put out. So I think that would be something you're probably already prioritizing.
Yeah, we do. And like last year too, we tried to sneak in some road resurfacings in the fall, right? So that mill and overlay work, um, in which case, you know, Public Works, we go out and like Griffith Street, we repainted the whole street in-house. So.
Uh, does this also include, I know I've had some conversations with you about there's some areas around, particularly in my neighborhood, and I think there's others too, that have curbs that were obviously painted in the past and have, you know, faded because they have not been repainted. I had said, is that possible against those repainted? I think it does help especially with parking and making sure people are well, it's, it's marked, it's demarcated well. Is that part of this what is too or not?
It's not. That, it's been a really long time since we painted the north, you know, the north, um, portion of town. Um, there isn't a traffic, um, you know, code that says that we have to do that. Um, and given that it's, tends to be a lot more residential in nature, um, you know, we, at, at some point, I think, um, you know, years and years ago, um, one of the decisions was to stop painting that and it's pretty much faded completely away. We do still hear from people once in a while about, you know, if they see some of those old flakes on there that, hey, you know, why doesn't this get repainted? But, um, you know, we certainly could. It's just, um, I think it was just, I don't know what the, why that decision was made, but it, it does seem to minimize the amount that, that, uh, that needs to be done. And, and the reality is too, you know, we have people that will call and complain that, you know, someone's parking in front of their driveway. Well, I can tell you for sure, we, if they're going to do that, no paint or sign is really likely going to stop them from doing that. So I, I question the, um, necessity of that.
Thank you. And I think that the fact that we're going to look at a three-year agreement to save ourselves, I think, I remember the same about thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars. This works out to about twenty-seven a year. Uh, so that'll be capped for three years. I think that's responsible, uh, cost management.
That's what we thought too.
Now, what if it, uh, what if we get into this project and you're not satisfied with the results? Is this something that we're committed to for three years or do we have a, we have an exit if we need?
I suspect before we actually sign a contract, we'll have some language baked in that contract that states that there's some quality specs that they need to adhere to.
Yeah, Mr. Mox, you can probably touch on the, uh, agreement language that they include for these types of projects.
Hi, John.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, yeah, Ryan's exactly right. Um, Scott's exactly right. We, um, we have our normal general conditions as part of this. So the, the city can terminate this contract basically at any time. Um, you, you have that out. And, and the way the pricing was set up is that we have it by year. So we, we know exactly what the twenty, twenty-five, six and seven, you know, amounts are to, to help do that.
Thank you, John. Uh, so will this require the city to make upfront? Based on what I just heard, the city would not make upfront payment of the eighty-one thousand dollars. We would pay by year?
Correct. This would run like your, any other construction contract where once the work is complete, the contractor will submit a request for payment. Scott and I will review it and come to you with a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
And Scott?
Just happy to see DPW outsourcing some of these routine projects. So I think it's great. Gives you guys the space to do more high-value work. So I think it's a good idea.
Thank you for the support of that. And then also you have saved us money here. I mean, you know, if we were paying by the year at that, at that price and then, so we have a little bit of savings it looks like too as well. So thank you.
Great. All right. Uh, thanks, Scott. Um, and I think you're probably still up or maybe not on the, um, or maybe this is John, resolution authorizing the submission of a recreation passport grant application. I guess that's you, Ryan.
Yeah, and I, I can turn it over to Mr. Moxius's, uh, do you recall we went, went through, uh, some, uh, kind of a refresh project we're looking at for Village Square? And the fact that there's a donor that's come forth willing to donate a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that our, you know, engineers had kind of recommended, hey, maybe we apply for this, uh, passport grant to, to, uh, kind of maximize those dollars and, and, and do a more comprehensive project. And so, uh, you approved that engineering proposal, uh, last month. Um, and then there's a requirement to actually have you pass a resolution indicating that you're supportive of the grant application going forward. Um, Mr. Mox, he did kind of include some, maybe some, some cost share is to make us a little more competitive. John, you want to kind of touch on that and anything else that you might have to add?
Yeah, the, the original kind of estimate that we did last fall was on the order of, uh, three hundred thousand dollars kind of for a, for a, a project that would leverage DNR funding. Um, so that would have been the hundred and fifty thousand from the passport program, a hundred thousand from a donor and fifty from the city. Um, we've, we've made a few kind of modifications, uh, since fall, just based on things we've heard in, in some of these meetings and elsewhere. Uh, we had some bleachers programmed that those are, are turning into just simple benches. Uh, we've scaled back a little bit on some of the, um, expansion of the concrete. Uh, we had kind of programmed in for a college-sized basketball court and, and everybody kind of, uh, thinks that a high school court is, is plenty. Um, so there, there have been some savings there. What I have for you in the draft resolution is a two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar project, uh, which I think is going to cover the, the, you know, the, the basic things, uh, that, that, uh, the donor approached us with, plus some really nice enhancements. Um, so that breakdown would be the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're asking from the DNR, our hundred thousand dollars from our donor and then just a nominal amount of ten thousand dollars from the city, just to show that kind of the, the city has skin in the game. It's not just kind of being a pass-through. But really, any, anywhere in that two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand-dollar range, depending on what this, this group thinks, you know, how, how much above and beyond the basics do we want to go?
Mayor? Yes. Um, John, thank you so much. This is Laura.
Um, John, thank you so much. This is Lauren. Um, I appreciate the, uh, taking away of the, uh, bleachers. That was ten thousand dollars that I agree that could just be benches. Um, I'm there a lot and we just need a place to put our shoes on or change our shoes, really. And then as far as, uh, the size of the court, I agree, bringing it down to a high school level basketball court seems like a great idea. And, um, this would be great. Again, having that hundred thousand dollar donor is just fantastic and, and let's hope we do well with this grant.
Chris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, a quick question. What's a footsaw net?
You're not alone. I had to research it too. That was a new one for me.
Sall. It's footsaw.
Foot soft?
Yep.
What is?
I can, I can explain it if you'd like. It's just a.
Turn it over to council members.
It's just, um, it's another, um, uh, game that you can play on a basketball court that creates more of a soccer-type thing on the courts. Um, it's just another thing that, um, a lot of communities are making a multi-purpose. So it can do both things.
And, and I'm going to throw this out and, and it's kind of ties into the whole donor thing. When I attended the last Park and Public Works meeting, they were talking about, uh, there's a foundation possibly being created to take care of things for the city. Uh, that taxes or city money can't pay for. I'd just like to throw, I think it'd be a, a good way to have the Park and Public Works Committee do a draft for a donor policy. This will be the third donor that they've worked with. So they know. Kind of all the way around to look at it. And, uh, I think if we're going to continue to having these wonderful donors, we should have some kind of parameters will work for us.
Agreed. That, I mean, I, I guess I would look to the city manager since that's sort of a, where the, the what and why and there the how. Um, if you want the, I mean, I guess how you want to tackle that, I would put. I would ask you how you would want to tackle that.
Yeah, if there's direction from council that, that you, uh, I know council member Gardner's brought this up before, but I wasn't hearing from other council members that you were desiring to, to create a more formal, um. Donor policy, but that's the direction that the council wants to go, then, uh, we'll work on, uh, bringing something to you, whether it's through committee or direct to you at a workshop, uh, we can.
However, I just think we, we should have some general thing. At some point, we're going to have two people that want to donate to something and. You know, the, we're going to have to decide what or where. So however you want to do it, it's fine with me.
How do other council members feel about that?
Well. Mayor Protem seemed to indicate that Parks and Public Works was, was kind of equipped to maybe take a first cut at something. Um, you know, where policies come into play, I, I'm kind of a less is more believer. Keep things simple. You don't want to turn off donors. Some people want to remain anonymous. I think that's important. Um, but I would trust. The product that would come out of PPW to be helpful. And I hate to put more on the manager's plate would be my only concern. So to start it there would seem logical to me.
Well, I guess my concern would be, um, as I brought up again, and I will every time we bring up the basketball court, was the desire of our past council and some that are currently on council now. Who wanted to dedicate the basketball court to, uh, forty-year service, uh, by Mark Becken.
Yeah.
And wondering if we're going forward with that and having a donor with that, would there be a conflict with that donor? With the idea of putting up a plaque or some kind of dedication, uh, type ceremony when we do get done so that we can honor. Uh, a great citizen who spent over forty years of his life here serving.
I think that, um, discussions have been happening around that. Um, I think one of the questions is timing. Um, if, you know, waiting until that were done and certainly we'd want to check with the donor. But yes, the, the wish to, to do something to. Honor Mark, um, is alive.
And, and that's the consensus of everybody here now.
I think I've, uh, my sense is it is, has been from, as I have had one-on-one conversations with folks.
Right.
There's a, an appetite for that.
Yeah. I remember there was a promise made, uh, years ago, uh, when Mark stepped down, that, that, that was what that council wanted to do. I'd like to see that go forward.
Yep, heard.
I love the idea of recognizing Mark. I think that's great and that would be a perfect place to do it. Um, just kind of as a side note, um, a lot of communities now, and. By the way, thank you for putting all this together. A lot of communities I've noticed are. I don't know if selling is the right word, but they're taking donations for like benches to put plaques on and recognize people. And I'm just wondering. If the council likes to do that down the road and maybe as recommendations from, you know, our parks committee. Is that something we're able to do even with the donations coming in on something like this? Just.
So that is some, an area where you actually do have a policy. You do have a, a bench, um.
A bench.
Donation policy or a policy related. So, um, as it exists today, there's kind of a, yeah, there's an application to, that, um. You know, potential donor can fill out and then as the city, you know, DPW identifies areas where there's additional bench needs or bench replacements or something along those lines, then we could go to that list. Sorry. Oh, got dry there for a second. Um, my understanding from Mr. Herbert is that, um, we just, we have a lot of benches out there, but we haven't really had to go to that list. Um, sorry.
Yeah, like this got brought up, you know, like when we, when we added some benches to the, the Village Square Playground. Um, you know, a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of support, uh, which we're very thankful for. Um, but we, we did have an inventory already and. Uh, most of the benches that we use are composite. And so they just, they just don't. You know, unless they end up in the river or something like that, they don't really, you know, rot or decay or have a need for replacement. And so. But, um, with the additional benches at the Village Square Playground, we, we don't have an inventory at this point. And so it's probably not all too soon, especially. You know, as we're discussing the, the Village Square Court upgrades and adding some benches, not bleachers. Pay attention to that person.
There were bleachers there. There were.
There were. Um, but, um, but yeah, now, now that we're, we're most likely going to have a need at some point, I think it would be a good time to probably pull out that list and start working through that. Cause I've, I've never. I've never, we've never, we've never gone through the process of ordering a customized, uh, memorial bench. So it might be time consuming.
Is there, is there plenty of people on that list? Do we have a big list of people that want benches? Just out of curiosity, do you know a number?
I'm just aware of the more recent folks that were looking to help out with Village Square because they saw the need there.
Right. Okay.
Sounds like. But I guess just to make sure my question's clear. So with the fact that we're taking donations and grant dollars. The city's putting in whatever, um, you know, minimal amount. There's nothing keeping us should we want to use the benches that are being placed in. For that purpose then, correct? I guess that was the question I was asking.
Guess I don't understand your.
So if someone wanted to put a plaque on one of the new benches at the new park or the revamped park.
Are there any conditions from the donate donors or the grant that would prevent us from doing that? That's the question.
Gotcha. So John would best be able to answer any grant conditions. The donor hasn't placed any conditions.
Yeah, I, I can speak to the grant side of it. Um, the, the DNR really just cares, you know, if, if we put benches in an application, they just want to see that benches got put out there. They don't care if it. Is something that we contracted with as part of, you know, a larger construction contract or if the city's providing those, uh, themselves.
Okay.
So, yeah, what, what before us is just, I think I'm hearing consensus that we want to go for this grant opportunity. And that's what's, yeah.
Okay. So, and, um, the city manager will follow up with PPW, um, on how they, yes, Russ?
Uh, if we're ready, I just have another, a few questions. Um, again, I support a donor policy for the city. I think the city should be driving that process. We should be identifying where we'd like donations to be directed. In regards to the donation for this, I'm very grateful for a hundred thousand dollar donation. That's very generous. Do we know where they directed to donate money to the village squares? There's some personal interest in the village square. Was there other things that I think the city has huge priorities on bald head stairs? Bald head bathrooms. I mean, there's some other projects.
I'm happy to answer that.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, they, um, were specific in wanting to donate towards a basketball court.
That's it.
Which is.
Ball players.
Right. And, and the other piece that, the other layer to that is that, yeah, they approached it, thinking about the Village Square Courts, but that's also in your current priorities for this fiscal year and also carried over for next year. So given that it was a. Prioritized project already and something they were coming forth with, um, that's why Steph kind of went to work on.
Uh, thank you. So the other, the other question I have about this is for the grant application itself. The, the bullet points that are in the memo, um, that has been brought forward, our approval of the proposal, does that tie us into this? Specifically, so in other words, one thing that has come up as a result of this is someone has said to me. We direct people to take their pets to the area right behind the basketball court. Why don't we turn that into a very small dog park? As opposed to a footsaw court? Why don't we use our money to build a small dog park? I think about the benefit to the people that come to the community. But which does not have one. And I thought that was a fantastic idea to carve out a space behind that. That to me would be a probably. More benefit over the years as well to our visitors and citizens. So I'm not saying that that's going to be accepted. I'm just wondering. Are we tied into this? Does a grant specifically grant this as opposed to if we come back and we say, we have some other ideas, we might want to look at some changes?
John, can let's, can he answer that in the new Lauren?
Yeah.
John, are there restrictions on the grant?
Yeah. So, um, at this stage, no. What, what you're, uh, approving in the resolution is just kind of the, the dollars associated with it, which obviously is tied to the, the, the amount of work that we're doing. But not necessarily the specifics. Uh, we, we have a meeting set up with Ryan and Scott, uh, tomorrow to kind of review some draft, uh, conceptual plans that we'll ultimately share with you folks. Uh, to get your blessing on. Um. The, even, even what we put in the April first, uh, application doesn't necessarily lock us down. We do have a, a, an opportunity. Uh, mid-year, summer, uh, late summer usually to make some adjustments to our application. So if there is something that really wants to be added or removed. We can, we can still do that even up to the point of, uh, after our initial application is submitted.
Lauren?
Yeah, the footsaw court is on the same footprint as the basketball court. There's nothing beyond that. It's just adding a couple more paint stripes and like adding nets.
I, I love a dog park idea, but I could see a, a retriever losing their mind next door to a tennis court.
My, my pickleballing.
What I suggest, I've seen numerous cities, it seems to work pretty well. So I, I just think that's a serious thing we should be looking at to benefit. A lot of people come with their dogs here and a lot of people have dogs. So I just think it's something we should be looking at because we encourage people to use that area already for that purpose. I'm also thinking that the Village Square, we call it a park, but it's the Village Square, less is more. That is a place of relaxation and this will be a further conversation. I have some other ideas. That's the reason I want to ask the question, make sure we don't constrain ourselves from a grant standpoint. Cause I think there should be some of the, some of these different proposals. So.
Okay. Anybody else before we move on?
I'll just add, uh, Madam Mayor, kind of along the, the thought process of less is more, this, this is plan A. Um, we have plan B. Uh, in mind, if, if we don't get the DNR grant, we still have a plan to kind of reduce our scope to, to some of the more simple items that the donor approached us with originally. And, and we can still implement those, uh, with, with donor funds.
Great. Thanks for being with us, John.
One last, last question. And I asked the city manager this question is. How do we know that the donor who chooses to remain anonymous, which I can respect, does not have some conflict of interest with the city? Or maybe some benefit? I'm just asking.
You've, you've raised this before.
I, I, the question has not been answered. And I think just from a transparency standpoint, I'm going to continue to ask that question.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I, I had this discussion with Mr. Witty and I, I defer to him to provide some comments on that.
Yeah. So I, and I guess maybe I don't understand what you're suggesting by a conflict of interest. I think, I mean, especially if the, the donor is anonymous. Um, that kind of speaks for itself, but otherwise the only conditions that would be attached to. A donation would be whatever is in the, the agreement between the donor and the city. Um, a, a conflict of interest, I guess, would be. You know, if somehow that donation was being maybe funneled to an individual council member, that could create a, a conflict of interest. But I, and, and I'm not suggesting that that would be the case.
Suggesting that.
But otherwise I, I don't necessarily know. I mean, it, it, it's. You know, I, I think city staff would know well enough that regardless of if they know someone who has made a donation, that doesn't mean they get special treatment. And otherwise I, I, I think it, it, it's just not something, I, I don't necessarily see how a, a conflict of interest could arise.
Yeah, I'm not accusing anybody of anything. This is a general statement that as a city has tried to increase its ethical concerns and raise its, you know, standards. That we have, we, since we don't have a policy that kind of guides us on this, I just want to make sure that there's never, there's not going to be a situation where. I, I, I don't know what the scenario could look like and it's not money flowing to anybody at the city council level for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but.
And again, I, I really didn't mean to insinuate that, that could have been the case or that you were even suggesting that. Um, I, I, I think. I mean, from a legal perspective, I, I think the way that council is handling these kind of, uh, as a ad hoc basis, taking each one up and examining it on its own merits and making a decision. I think there's enough. Procedure built in there that there's not, at least as far as I can see, any room for impropriety or, or using a donation to receive some kind of preferential treatment.
Okay.
And I, I, I would say too, the, the city attorney is aware of who the donor is. Um, the former mayor is aware and I'm aware as the current mayor. And so I would think with. Those four different people, including an attorney. Um, I, I'm very comfortable. We have. Process in place to, um, not violate our ethical. Standards. And I also, you know, trust the, um, city manager to make proper decisions on something like that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just one quick question.
Yeah.
I'm incredibly grateful for whoever this donor is. Um. And I'm fearful for how this question's going to come out, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Um, does, does, does the funds, do the funds go into an escrow? Are they paid out as the work is completed? I mean, I just want to understand if there's any scenarios where the city would. Be on the hook for work if for whatever reason the donor changed his mind and decided to back out.
So, you know, good example would be, um, you know, the airport property. We didn't get started on that until we actually received the, the donated dollars. When we have our, our audit, our auditors look at what are miscellaneous donations and they ask, you know. Especially a large amount like that. What is that for? What was it? You know, and so they, they typically will restrict those dollars and then indicate that they, you know, it's restricted fund balance that can only be used for that purpose.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a scenario where we, it could.
Right.
Fall apart and we're on the hook for a whole bunch of work. That's all.
Yep, yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, one last question for John. John, what's the timeframe on this? How soon will we know?
Yeah. So we'll get preliminary scoring, um, around that end of, end of summer, early fall. And that's when we can make some, make some changes. If we get some support, letters of support that come in late, we can add those, uh, kind of adjust some things. Basically they do a preliminary scoring at DNR so that we can. Kind of enhance our application and, and, uh, you know, get the most points possible. Uh, that'll happen late summer. Then they'll do their final review. Uh, throughout the fall, we usually hear around December, uh, whether we get the grant. And, and once we kind of get our preliminary scoring, we'll have a decent idea. Of, um, whether we think we're going to be kind of in that fundable range. Um, so we could start design as early as, as fall, late fall, and then, uh. Probably bid it around this time next year, um. Or, or into the summer, depending on when we get started, uh, for probably fall, fall of twenty-twenty-six construction, just to kind of avoid some of the, the busy summer season.
Thank you, John.
All right. We will move on to, uh, five D, which is the short-term rental licensing ordinance agreement. Um, Ryan, you want to tee up Luke? Jake, Jake?
Well, if Ryan wants to, otherwise I'm happy to. So.
Great.
Um, believe it was the last workshop, uh, we talked about potential changes to the STR licensing ordinance. Uh, the two main objectives were to create. Um, a limited grace period for applications that were not submitted on time. Um, and also to allow certain kinds of transfers that would not change. The identity of the individuals having ownership or an ownership interest in the property of the STR license that would allow the form of ownership to change. Um, the council's intent was also for those two things to. Uh, apply retroactively because as we were made aware of, there were a number of STR. Um, certificate holders who were subject to some kind of transfer. And it, it seemed like the consensus was that the most equitable approach would be to allow them to. Have a short-term rental license and continue operating, um, given that we're carving this out. Um, so the. Draft language is in red line here. So this is presented as a, a amendment to the STR licensing ordinance. Um, the changes from the existing language are in red line. Uh, some of the other changes, um. Include. A change to section ninety-nine point fifty-eight C, um, requiring each year for STR licenses or premises held by a corporation to provide. You know, an updated documentation showing corporate ownership interest. So that way the city can make sure that. Um, people are not adding new owners, um, under the guise of, oh, it's the same corporation. Uh, cause otherwise that, that information was not expressly required under the, the licensing ordinance. And in talking with. And in talking with, uh, Ryan, he made a great point that, hey, we should have that for trusts as well. So the next iteration you'll see of this will also say if the property is held in a trust, they'll have to annually submit proof that just, you know, the people holding the property have not changed. The, I think the late fee stuff is, or sorry, the late application stuff is relatively straightforward. Making it retroactive is a little messy. Uh, so I apologize for that. It's kind of unavoidable. If we want this to normally ordinances apply only prospectively to, so to take it back, is, is a little bit ungainly, um, and maybe a little challenging to understand. The way that the late application, the, the retroactive window of that is established as it, is it applies from, applications that were submitted after August 26, 2024. So that's the date that the amendment to the STR ordinance imposing caps took effect. Um, and it would, that retroactive window would close whenever this new amendment is adopted. So it's not going to be any, you know, licenser certificate from the beginning of time. It's only ones that, that because of the, you know, late filing, they didn't have the ability to refile because the maximum limits were in effect. And then the last piece here is a, the addition of permitted transfers. The intent here generally is to say, as long as it is the same people who are owning the property, it can change between individual ownership, corporate ownership or trust ownership. However, you know, in whatever order, um, that may be so long as at the end of the day, it's the same people and people aren't being added or removed. And then because there are so many different arrangements of ownership and, you know, in working with Luke, it seems like every, every we can see there's a, a new kind of challenging scenario. We have this catch-all language, um, sort of actually two provisions. So there's some section C4 that says, we're not going to allow transfers that are changing the composition of the owners. And then there's subsection D that says, okay, even if something is not expressly authorized in these three examples of permitted transfers, if at the end of the day, the only thing it is effectuating is a change in the form of ownership, but not who owns the property or the license, then that can be permitted. And then, well, I guess first let's see if there's any, any questions on what has been presented to you at this point.
Questions?
When I brought up the, uh, the, uh, the idea of having a, uh, late, late fee or a, a, a grace period, um, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned 10 days and it seemed like we were all on board with 10 days. Can you tell me how we got to five days?
Yeah. So that was in consultation with city staff and I think just trying to balance the administrative problems in having a like condensed timeframe to review applications and fitting in the fire inspection. I don't, I don't know if Ryan and Luke have any specifics they want to add there to, to what those timeframes are like.
Yeah. So, um, obviously it, it takes time for, for Luke to, uh, review the applications as they come in and, and process and enter, and then send to the fire department. And then the fire department, depending on the, the period of time that we're in, uh, could have a pretty big stack of, uh, inspections that they need to get through. And so order that still try to provide a reasonable amount of time for them to get, uh, through the inspections in the order that they're received and still get an inspection back before the license expires and have that new license issued. 10 days just didn't seem like that was going to be the, the period that was going to, uh, allow that still to occur. You know, and thinking about, okay, well, this five days still take care of a scenario where you're on the weekend and, and, um, you know, you're, you're applying early the next week. Or if you're at the beginning of the week, you still get, you can still get it in by the end of the week. That there's still that, that period of time to, uh, realize the issue and, and, and be outside of the, um, you know, still have some grace, still get outside of those weekend periods, um, and, and still get it in, um, once it's realized.
So, so that was changed to five to decrease the workload that you might see coming from that.
Not necessarily the workload, just giving the maximum amount of time that we can still to, you know, reasonably get something to the fire department and get an inspection and get that inspection back and the, and the license issued.
So I think the objective is to avoid situations where there's, you know, like a pending inspection, where the application has been processed by city staff and the old licenser certificate expires and then someone's operating ostensibly legally, um, and there's not enough time to, to.
Okay. Thank you. And then also, um, the fee, um, it's not yet been established, right?
Yeah. I think we'd have to separately. Yeah. That's something we can discuss. I mean, since this could, I mean, if we pass this, it could come into play fairly soon. So we should, we can either today or, um, talk about what we were thinking for that.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as the five day, um, the five days, are we talking about if you're late the 30 days prior to the date of the license set to expire or five days after it expires? Are we five days late, 30 days prior to the expiration or five days late?
Different for STR licenses and STR certificates. So STR licenses have to be submitted 30 days before it expires. There is no corresponding deadline for STR certificates. So five days late in either case is, is what was applied here.
And that would be five days from the, from the expiration date, not from the, not the 30 days.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. For certificates, but the, there's a distinction though. Yes. The, the license, you still have to either apply more than 30 days prior to it expiring or 25 days before it expires. That would be the absolute hard max, uh, with the existing language that's drafted.
And a certificate would.
If your certificate expires and you have up to five days after the certificate expires to submit a short-term rental license application. Yep.
Chris?
Yeah. I, I know the stupid question. Tell me the difference between the certificate and the license.
Yeah. So the certificate was what we issued under the, the, uh, zoning regulations previously. That was good for a three-year period. Uh, the license is now outside of zoning and only good for one year. So the certificate holders were kind of grandfathered in or allowed to continue to have their short-term rental certificates and allowed to apply for a license when that certificate expired.
So they're the, they're the old.
We're getting rid of the certificate.
Yeah. There will be no new certificates issued. Yeah.
My question would be, uh, on the five days, could we do it five working days or five business days? I don't like having the weekend count as, as a, as part of the time.
I agree.
No, I agree.
And I mean, so then that digs into the amount of, that's a week then for, um, you know, we're losing a, a week essentially in terms of getting the fire inspections done.
It's pretty typical in business that you do it business days, not calendar days.
Got it. But the, the fire department doesn't, they work, I mean, we, they don't work with weekends. I mean, it's just, it's.
Right. I think.
I used, I think we just want to be sure. And I guess I would ask, you know, Ryan, um, if that's going to pinch the staff with time to process.
Yeah. I mean, it's, 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 it's less days. I think the intent was that if somebody realizes on a Friday or somebody realizes on a weekend that, oh crap, I missed my deadline, that they would have, you know, some period of time to apply late. And I think, you know, the, the example actually that came up was a, a day late, uh, and, and it was on a weekend. Uh, and I think this would account for those types of scenarios and allow for it either at the beginning of the week or, or end of the week, if you're hitting a weekend, somebody to still realize that the mistake was made and still offer a reasonable amount of time for us to, to get through that, that application and get a fire inspection.
I mean, I mean, they're, you know, the deadline's pretty clear. So my take is that we should be solving for our staff being able to handle the workload and, and staff, including the fire district versus, I mean, you know, they, they're late. So it seems like a couple, I mean, I think three days grace is generous.
I'm, I'm comfortable with what staff and, and legal counsel have come up with.
Others?
Yeah, I am as well. I'm not, I'm not sure going from five to seven to 10 to three is going to probably make a material difference in most cases. I think like you outlined, it's probably people that realize they made an oversight. But having said that, I think it's important in the ordinance that we clarify that it's calendar days. If that's what we were settling in on, not just days, but that's a minor tweak to the language. Yeah.
Lauren?
Yeah. That's what I want clarified is what is it exactly? So there's no gray area.
I mean, I think realistically somebody's going to miss the, the late deadline too. And so we just have to, I mean, yeah, I mean, at some point a deadline's a deadline. So.
Yeah, I'm fine with making that change.
I have another question.
Yep.
Will we go to public hearing with this?
There's no requirement to. So this is a, this is a police power ordinance. It doesn't go through the planning commission. It is just adopted by the council. If the council wants to hold a public hearing, there's nothing that would prevent it from doing so, but there's not a legal requirement to have one.
Other questions? So this.
Oh, thank you. That's my understanding. Um, so we're moving in the right direction on this. I'm so happy we're doing this. This is a direct result of comments that we've gotten from our constituents. I've gotten as well as, you know, residents of this community. So I'm very pleased we're moving in this direction. The devil's in the details on this, of course. So I know there's a lot of scenarios, especially looking at the permitted transfer section. And, um, it seems like all the scenarios that I think I can imagine are covered. But again, like you said, there's probably going to be something that comes to Luke's desk. He's like, I don't, I don't think this is in there. So what's the relief in a situation like that? Well, maybe we don't have it codified. That, is there a way to review that?
Yeah, that's in subsection D, the waiver.
The waiver. Okay. Thanks.
The ability to authorize a transfer that doesn't neatly fit into one of those buckets, but fills the same.
Perfect.
Objective.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. No, please go ahead. Well, I, I was going to change topics. So if you have more questions about the.
I do it.
Let's do that first.
And, and around the transfers. So I just imagine a situation where you've got a family of five kids. The father owns the property and they put it into a trust LLC, whatever you call it. As long as those five kids are the same people that, so when the father transfers it, the father is no longer on it. It's the five kids and that's allowed, correct? Because based on this, it would not be allowed.
It's not allowed. No, you can't add new ownership interests.
So, so a situation where you had five kids, but then all of a sudden the six kids added to an LLC currently existing license, that's not allowed either.
That's not allowed.
I think that is a little short sighted for this community because I think there are situations where that's going to occur. And as a matter of fact, I think that may be the situation that was described earlier by Mr. Trungali. So that was going to be my next question is the scenario that was explained by Mr. Trungali. They're not going to be permitted to get their, their transfers and not.
That's, that's, that's correct. And that was, I think, pretty clear direction from council. And there are, there are some additional transfers that I want to talk about that I, after giving it more thought and developing the issue with, with staff, I think probably need to be considered in this ordinance amendment. But the issue with generational transfers, I, I thought the direction from council, the last workshop was pretty clear. And I think the issue that you get into with allowing generational transfers is that is something that can permit an STR license to exist in perpetuity. And the maximum limit on STR licenses in certain zoning districts, the idea is for them to be ameliorated over time. And if you allow them to be conveyed to people who don't currently have an ownership interest in the property, especially like a conveyance from a parent to a child. I mean, that, that, that could ostensibly go on indefinitely.
Of course.
Yeah. I, I think that's, that's, that's a policy consideration for, for the council to make. And I understand that there are, there are certainly interests on both sides of it.
Yeah. And, and again, um, there's a number of people in this, who have been around this community for a long time. I mean, I know a house by the family that owns it. Well, that's the, you know, gardener house. This is my house. We've owned that house since, I don't know, late 50s, something like that. That bought it from his uncle. His last name happened to be Brown, built in Brown. Um, so in my situation, the gardener house, if my daughter, if at some point we will it to my daughter and then we pass on it, my daughter gets the house and there's a license with it. Now we're kind of different because we're in a, we're in a, you know, we have an ADU. It's a different situation. But if we were a standard short-term rental, that would be gone with that situation, correct?
Yes.
And I, I think that's a problem.
Well, Russ, that was the, just, just to remind you, that was a deliberate decision and vote by the council, uh, a year ago. So, or the year in August. So understand that you disagree, but.
No problem with it.
That was the intent of the policy change.
I don't think it reflects our community and the lifetime homes and generational homes that this community has, and there's a lot of them.
Well.
The last question I have is how many properties are actually going to be impacted by this particular change? I mean, we know of one today with Mr. Trungali that presented, do we know the number of properties are actually not going to be going forward because of this? I mean, we're moving in the direction generally, but I think some people are going to be left out.
So I think at the, the last workshop, Luke identified 15.
That's the number that I heard too, but I want to make sure that's still.
But, but not all of them would be affected by.
That's the number I'm driving towards.
Yeah. And we haven't, you know, done that. I mean, obviously we know properties that have had a, uh, transfer of ownership, but we haven't dove into each particular circumstance to, uh, because we don't have that set policy direction from staff. But, um, I mean, we could certainly identify what, I guess, scenario they're all falling into, if that's something that, that you desire.
Yeah.
So my question.
Point of order.
So if you, if you wouldn't mind if I could ask a question in regards to all of this, when we're talking about, um, things that happened in 23, 24, prior to us, uh, doing this, um, how did, how did Luke, um, get notified when there was a change of ownership? Was there anything that said, hey, change of ownership, you are not compliant anymore?
So my understanding, well, I guess you, you speak.
So as of now, I, I receive all, uh, property transfer affidavits. So whenever one comes in, I just cross, look at it and then I look at, you know, the property and see if it has a rental license. There is a part of the regulations in place that say that, you know, any change that occurs, you are supposed to notify the city. Uh, so that is a part of the old regulations also.
So the old regulations said that as part of their, um, what they agreed to with their certificate at that time.
Right. It's on the application itself, Lauren. And there, there were like, I think either eight or nine things when you signed the certificate that you agreed to. And one of them was to notify the city if there was a change in ownership. It was the eighth one. And I can't remember if there was one.
And if there was a change of ownership that went to an LLC, a trust, a quick claim situation.
Any change in ownership.
And it says that specifically.
It does it right on the short-term rental license. Okay.
And then, but otherwise.
Application.
Before you never got any kind of notification of that?
Well, when somebody renews or when someone applies for a license, like they're going from a certificate to a license, or when somebody renews a license, um, I'm obviously looking at ownership information people submit.
But that's only after they're doing the renewal.
Yes.
So they would have done this prior to when their renewal date was up. And then they went to renew it and then the cap was in place.
So essentially the, that property transfer affidavit that he was referring to, those used to just go to the assessor. They didn't go to the building department. We didn't have a need to, to look at them. But with this, I've seen new requirements and the cap in place, we've implemented some changes to make sure that Luke's getting a copy of those, can, can flag them when that comes up.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just clarifying just how that, that goes through your office. Scott?
So I'll ask of staff and of council, do you feel that this language that you suggested in any way weakens, dilutes what we have or creates a loophole that's going to be problematic down the road? Or is this a way to address what is basically this kind of technical issue of, you know, the, the vehicle that the, the property is in?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I don't think there's any, I mean, I say this now, so there's, there's catch-all provisions to, to stagger loopholes. And otherwise I think, I, I think the balance that the city is trying to strive with the maximum limit is on, on one hand, you have a oversaturation of a particular kind of activity in certain zoning districts. And on the other hand, you have people who have been issued a, a certificate or a license and they have an interest in that and continuing to operate. This allows people to continue to operate and enjoy that interest. But it also doesn't allow that to be given away to new people. The, and that kind of dovetails into the. The, and that kind of dovetails into the last point I have here. And this actually came up with a discussion with Luke where there's, apparently he has at least one STR operator who the license was held jointly by a married couple. And one of them passed away. And now there's a question of, well, what is this due to the, the license? Because that is, you know, with like a joint tenancy with the right of survivorship that automatically transfers their, the, the deceased spouse's interest to the surviving spouse, would, it would literally be a change of ownership. And working through this issue further with city staff and doing additional research, my recommendation would be to allow the surviving spouse or for other kinds of arrangement, basically for the interest in an STR license to persist after an ownership interest is removed. And I know this was talked about a little bit. I, I think it probably could have been developed a little more. The concern that I'm coming from is, you know, a lot of the times these are situations that are outside of a license holder's control. Obviously with a married couple, your spouse dies, you don't have any control over that. And then to use that as a justification to, to remove a license that's otherwise validly issued, I, I think that could expose the city to liability. And so as the amendment is drafted, I think it's consistent with the council's direction at the last workshop to say that either adding or removing people from a STR license or having an interest in the premises that's used for a short-term rental would constitute a disqualifying transfer. My recommendation, you know, subject to the council's approval, would be to say that only adding new ownership interests would be a disqualifying transfer. But for instance, if you had like a, a partnership with multiple people, one of those partners can leave and that would not constitute a disqualifying transfer because again, that's a situation where the, the other individuals having an interest in the license or the property there, it's not really subject to their control.
I agree with that.
I support that.
Okay.
Well, then that will be in the.
I don't know how everyone else feels.
Trying to think this through. So in any and all scenarios, if somebody drops out, it's okay.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I would think so. You know, again, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, a husband and wife, the husband passes away or the wife passes away, and you've got the one, you know, remaining. You know, I think that's absolutely fair.
Hundred percent on board with this, that. I mean, I'm hundred percent there. What I'm struggling with is, you know, a corporate entity. One owner decides to sell out his stake to the others. I don't, I'm, I'm just running, trying to game it through my mind. And are we opening anything up by allowing those types of? Cause we're going now from uncontrollable, uncontrollable events to controllable events.
Well, and I think the, the challenge there is, is how finally do you want to draw the line between what's a controllable event and not a controllable event? And at the end of the day, if there's a provision that says you can't add new owners, a short-term rental license cannot outlive the, the last person to have an interest in it.
All right.
And so, and they're like for a partnership, you know, let's say that someone for financial reasons is forced to sell. They, they have to relocate due to circumstances beyond their control, or they pass away. But I think it would be challenging for the city to be in the business of picking apart, you know, reasons for why someone is abdicating their ownership interest in a, in an STR. When at the end of the day, you know, if the property is sold or transferred, or if the last person having an interest in it passes away, or if they stop renewing the license, that's when it ends. At, at least that's my perspective on it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I can get behind it. I'm just, I guess if we see evidence that there's scenarios that are being gamed out there that fit within what you've outlined, we can always, you know, make adjustments down there.
Right. And then talking to, to Luke today, I, I think you said that the most individuals having an interest in an STR license that you've seen was four. Is that accurate? So it's not going to be situations where there's, there's a lot of people having an interest and it's, it's difficult to track down. It's, it's, it's.
I've seen some very creative.
Right.
Things done with corporations owning corporations, owning corporations and divesting. And it's, it's, there's probably some scenarios that can be gamed into that model. I don't know if it's going to be a lot.
I think it's something to keep an eye out for because I agree, you know, anything that can be gamed will be gamed. And we do require, we are going to require with the renewal, you have to show your, I mean, it's not, you just show your LLC or trust the first time. You have to show it every year. So we'll be, we'll have an opportunity to look if all of a sudden there's an explosion of people with, you know, more than, or, or one thing we could consider maybe is limiting the number of people who can have interest in the license. I don't know if that's possible.
Well, either way, I completely support the spirit of what we're trying to do here. And for goodness sakes, somebody loses their spouse or whatever. I mean, for sure, we don't want them hurt.
Right.
And if that means opening up a little bit on the other end to maybe some gaming, it's, it's still the right thing to do for, for the property owners in our town, I think. So, yeah.
And one thing I just wanted to, I had a couple of people reach out to me and they were just concerned about the whole transfer. But what they weren't understanding is it's just the transfer of the short-term rental license. And they were like, well, what if this scenario changes? And I said, well, first of all, are you in the R1? And they were not in the R1. I'm like, well, you still have to get a new license if you change who's in your LLC. But you are allowed to do that in areas that there's not a cap. If there's a cap, then you could apply for a new license, but you're going to be on the waiting list, basically, right? So am I, I just want to make sure that that is being clarified because there was a lot of questions out there with that.
Exception being there's not a waiting list for the cap districts. But you, you have to wait until licenses become available and there's a lottery.
I, I meant it in that way, the lottery.
But absolutely.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah. So if somebody that is not in R1, there's a change of ownership, there's a change, like in their LLC, something changes, they just have to get a new license through the city, which is easy enough to do if you are not in a situation where there's a cap in the residential zone.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Other questions?
Just one, and I apologize for getting too granular here, but in the permitted, sorry. In the permitted transfers, section, subsection C3, short-term rental licenses or premises may be transferred to an individual or individuals from a corporate entity or trust, provided that the individual or individuals are the current owners, members, settlers, trustees, or beneficiaries of the corporate entity or trust that currently owns the short-term rental license or premise. Maybe it's academic based on what we just talked about, but it felt to me like you can, an entity can transfer now to a subset. It could be argued that an entity, that corporate entity that owns a property can now transfer it to a subset of the owners because it's not clear that the ownership entity in its entirety must transfer one for one. But that's just me reading it and saying I could probably make an argument there. I don't know if you feel strongly that the language prevents that from happening, but that would be my question.
I think, well, and, and bear in mind that this was drafted when we didn't want to have any change in composition. And I think the scenario that you're describing is that they could, they could drop an order.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Which maybe makes that academic.
And at the end of the day, we're still going to have subsection four. It's going to be revised to say that you can't have any, any kind of transfer that's going to add new ownership.
Okay, I'm good.
And that's going to be kind of the backstop where we say, okay, notwithstanding anything else above there, if the effect of this transfer is going to be now someone has an interest in the property or the STR license that previously did not, that's not allowed.
Got it. Okay.
Other questions?
So just recapping where we are, we're on the, the late, you know, the late period. We're okay with five days, but we'll specify it's calendar days. On the, the rest of it, we will stay with our position that you can't add owners. That qualifies as a change in ownership, but someone can drop off whether death or to, for whatever.
All right. Yes, Russ?
Madam Mayor, what would be the harm in holding a public hearing on this, even though it's not required? What would be the harm?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah, I'm just asking, what would be the?
Well, for the, for the Lufflers, for example, it puts them in limbo longer. I also think my sense is that the, you know, we've been over this before. We're, we are loosening up what we passed last year. And I have, I don't have a sense that council has moved off of, I don't think we have the votes to change it.
Yet.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I do not appreciate Councilmember Dean shaking his head no when I make a comment. I'm just asking a question. This, in my opinion, is going to leave some people behind. And again, I'm just using Mr. Tringali because of his example today that I think that, you know, it's, I don't know, I'm struggling with this.
Well, I mean, fewer people are being left behind with what we're doing now than if we don't do anything at all than where we were before, which this council passed. And so unless, I mean, I'll, I put this up to council members, whether you think we need to have a public.
I, I do, I do not think so. And that's why I'm shaking my head because I do not want to reopen the debate on short-term rentals. I think the policy direction that the voters basically voted on is clear, that we are trying to encourage people to live full-time in our prime, our one residential district. We are trying to encourage longer-term rentals in our residential district. I will get to this issue when we talk about the no-wake zone. But to reopen the debate and to try to crack open the ordinance, which I think is, is frankly, an attempt to destroy the ordinance, is something that I'm not going to support.
Madam Mayor, I take exception to that comment. That is not why I'm.
Let's, okay. You know what? We're, I, we, we've heard you both.
A pretty wide brush that Councilmember Dean's painting on me, and it's not appropriate.
I didn't direct it at you, Councilman.
Madam Mayor.
Hold on, please. So I, I want to read, just say something that Joe said the last time, which I think is good context for why we're here and why we're talking about this is we passed comprehensive changes last year, thanks to the work of a lot of people here and past council and the short-term rental task force. And so the purpose of what we've been doing the last couple of weeks is how can we tweak this? What are, you know, how can we make this better? And so it's not a wholesale, let's revisit short-term rental, you know, relitigate or re-debate what we've debated. It's how can we make improvements? And I feel, and Chris, you and I talked about that when you first came on council. I think we have honored the spirit of that. So Chris, you had a comment?
I, I do. And I guess it's kind of a response to Councilmember Dean not wanting to bring the whole thing back up again. Things have changed. You made the comment, well, if you don't like what I'm doing, vote me out. Well, we did. We voted out a hardliner. We voted me in and we voted Gregory back in. And so though that short-term rental issue is still out there.
I agree.
Absolutely. We also voted Lauren in.
And I, I agree, Councilman. I'm sure that short-term rentals will be the number one issue of the November election in Sagittar. And it will. And I think everyone should be very clear on their policy views.
It should be.
I, I think you and I agree there.
All right. Anything else? Jake, do you have what you need?
I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Okay. Well, now we go to 5E, which is the review of the slow no-wake zone request. Ryan, that's page 29 of our packets.
And Madam Mayor, council discussed this at your, your last workshop meeting. Since that time, just some, unless you'd like, I can, I can certainly summarize what we discussed last time. But there were two council members who weren't able to, to be at that portion of, of the meeting where the slow no-wake zone rate was discussed. And there was a request to bring this back for further discussion. Since that time, the Douglas representative on the harbor authority kind of, you know, discussed with the harbor authority at their meeting last week. Their suggestion was that there be some sort of, you know, kind of private community survey similar to what was done for the wildlife committee, that, that something similar be, be put out on this issue to the community. The Douglas manager indicated that she was willing to, to prepare such a survey and that they had some interest in, in pursuing that. I also heard today from the Amador from the Sagittar Yacht Club that indicated that they would not be supporting the no-wake zone in, in Lake Kalamazoo and would consider supporting limits on size of the boat, such as a 26-foot limit. But at this time was not supporting the measure. So I, I leave it to the council to, to further discuss how you would like to proceed. There's.
Sagittar Yacht Club said that?
Yep, yep. So you, you do not have to make any changes. You can choose not to pursue any, any changes at this time. You could, could conduct that survey and, and discuss further, or you can ask us to direct or direct staff to prepare a resolution that either makes the wake completely, or makes the lake completely no-wake. You could do something less than that. You could propose a resolution that, that expands the no-wake zone as it exists. You could prepare a resolution on a, on a watercraft control that, that limits the size of vessels that, that can create wake or, you know, restrict skiing and tubing hours. Whatever resolution we come up with would be subject to a public hearing and then further discussion. And then if you were to vote and say, yes, this is what we want to proceed with, then that would ultimately go to the DNR, who has to study it, decide if they're willing to support this. If they are, then they would provide us with an ordinance to actually adopt. So it was a very lengthy process. It's just a discussion at this point.
Right. And to reiterate what Ryan said, so when we were last talking about it, we were missing, I think Scott might've been part of it. Or, and I know Russ was out. So I really wanted to be sure that we had the whole council here to weigh in on this before we decided whether to.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I did have to depart for the deer meeting. The first lens I look at this through is the public safety lens. And, and I find the eyewitness accounts from the folks that are in the marina business to be very persuasive. I mean, many, many of us have seen anecdotally, those of us that, that boat. Unfortunately, you know, there, there is frequently unsafe behavior. People traveling too quickly, you know, when, when clearly people are fueling. And, you know, and, and it, it does affect other boaters. I, I've heard about the yacht club's position. And I think that the, their, their angle was also safety. They want to be able to respond quickly to like an accident that the sailing school might have. I don't believe that such an ordinance would ever, you know, result in a penalty to someone that was going to rescue somebody in a public safety situation. Given though that this does touch Douglas as well, I think there is some merit to, you know, doing this together and checking with both communities like we've done with the deer thing. I think, I think this, this might be an example where that makes sense, given that we share the lake. So directionally, I, I, I think it might be time to pursue this. I know it's controversial. But once again, you know, we are trying to, you know, preserve our small town or small harbor town charm. We are getting more visitors, more visitors that are coming here are bringing small personal watercraft, be it paddle boards, kayaks, you, you name it. There are also a number of people that, that are renting boats and, you know, some of them, you know, that, that's their first time in a boat. And so they don't sort of, you know, they, they don't have the level of skills that, that other more experienced boaters have. And so we do need to look out for their public safety. I'm not an expert on this, but I'm also interested in the opportunity to, once again, support our business community and support our tourism community if we began to treat the harbor more like a harbor that had the opportunity for more yachts to moor in the harbor area and feel secure and safe in doing so. You know, mooring balls don't come free. You know, typically they have like a QR code on them and people then pay the municipality or the owner of the, of the, the location to overnight their boats and, and to moor safely, you know, in a harbor. So the time may be right to start to, to think about this. And so I'm, I'm very open-minded to the idea of an awake zone. I think it might be worthwhile hearing from, from the community. There are some moves afoot that we also need to be thinking of. I don't know if they're going to get traction, but last year, the state legislature was considering restrictions on wake boats. That didn't happen because obviously. That didn't happen because obviously there was a lot of lobbying on both sides of the issue. But that's, you know, that's a growing trend of people, you know, using these boats that are actually designed. You can put them into wake mode and then people can basically, you know, surf behind the, behind these vessels that are actually designed in a certain configuration to create a larger wake. So there are a number of things that would lead me to believe, you know, including our, our sort of overarching, I think, goal as a council, for this to be an inviting, small-town charm that kind of goes back to our fishing and our, you know, our, you know, our, our yachting heritage, to consider, you know, making it safer for everybody. I know it's inconvenient. I mean, I'm, I'm just as guilty as any other voter as, as putting the hammer down in the middle of the lake and flying across that, that lake. Because I'm, as you know, I'm not a terribly patient person. But I do think, you know, in the interest of safety, this is worth a look. And I'm, I'm sorry for the long kind of monologue on it, but I have had a lot, a chance to think about it. And I'm sorry I missed the discussion.
That's why we're having it now.
Previously.
Lauren, how about if we just kind of go around on this? Because I think everybody has something to say, so.
Yeah, I would say that we are at a kind of 50-50 in town, you know, as far as what people want. It's really 50-50. So that's why, you know, if we had a public hearing, I worried that we would be a little like, what do we do? So I guess I'm more in favor of some restrictions. Not a full no-wake zone, but some restrictions on the size of the boat, possibly on wake boats. And also expanding the no-wake zone, just so it's further away from the marinas and from anyone near shore. So, you know, we, we have a pontoon rental business and we have stopped our rental customers from being able to go full throttle. We've asked them to go no-wake the whole way because they were inexperienced and couldn't figure out, hey, where's that no-wake zone? Where's that no-wake zone? And we were just kind of over it. So we made sure that none of our rental boats can go full throttle. So that's one aspect of it. We also don't rent any kind of, you know, tubes from behind or anything like that. So you don't have inexperienced drivers doing the tubing. So that's something we do. I don't know what the other pontoon rental company does, but just keep that in mind. And yeah, those wake boats do create a very big wake. So I do believe maybe a hearing is in order where we can discuss some of these restrictions, but maybe not a full no-wake. I'm not in favor of no, a full no-wake, but I do believe we could have a compromise with a few restrictions.
Russ?
Yeah, thank you. I am not in favor of a full no-wake zone either. I am interested in hearing some ideas, as was mentioned in the email that came from the Commodore, the Sagatuck Yacht Club, but other harbors that maybe have tried to resolve this. And you can't make everybody happy. And I don't know that it's a 50-50, frankly. We don't know that. I don't, we don't know that. And I think there's a lot of people in this town that are professional mariners and so forth that would have a real opinion about what the city and maybe the village should do in this situation. And we, I definitely want to hear from them. I think it would be helpful to learn what other communities have done, as was mentioned about Spring Lake, about maybe restricting the size of boat that could throw a wake, 26-foot. I don't know how that was arrived at, but I think that's worth consideration. The problem is with a no-wake zone across the entire lake is that you've got a high level of enforcement. And that's a real burden on our sheriff deputies. And again, I, I just think back to what's the problem we're trying to solve here? The safety issue, of course. And that's the reason why you see buoys off the end of Sergeant Marina. And that was done years ago in response to concerns that have been raised by the people at Sergeant Marina's over the years. So there have been efforts made in the city and there's buoys out that are put out that tell people this is a no-wake zone. So there's already been efforts made to try to control some of those safety situations. And again, from the comments that were included in the packet, I'm not seeing anything definitive that says we have a huge safety issue here.
Chris?
I, I don't support a full no-wake zone either. And I, I think, again, this is one of those issues that we need to make sure that we have a lot of public opportunity to comment. And I think the idea of Douglas putting together some type of survey, that'd be my, maybe the first step to go out there so that people are aware that this discussion is even happening. I think that the idea of moving the buoys out or having the 26-foot, those are all possible things that we could look at. But I think we need, just need to do a first step to let people know what we're looking at and try to get some input from them. And I know surveys are a pain to handle, but at least it goes out to everybody. They know what's being happened because this is a huge recreational time. And, and the only place you can tube or jet ski or do those is in that harbor. And you can't do it anywhere else. You can't go out in the lake and do it like that. So I appreciate this, the safety issues. You're not going to see kayaks, I don't think, going down the middle of the road, middle of the harbor anyway. I know, I know. I know they do.
My father-in-law, eight, nine-years-old does it.
Yeah. And again, those are the things we have to look at. But no, I don't support a full no-wake. And I'd be willing to listen after we have a survey, see what, what the public thinks.
Joe?
Well, as I stated last, in our last discussion on this topic, you know, I firmly believe it's a safety issue. I'm down there a lot. My boat sits in the no-wake zone and it's still tremendous. Man, I've watched people go in. I've watched people almost who survived. I've watched, seen tremendous damage. So, you know, with all due respect to my, my council members here, just because it's the only area that can support tubing and what, what have you, doesn't mean it's, we should allow it. A 26-foot boat that's half on plane makes an enormous wake. And a 26-foot, foot boat that's half on plane that's doing circles out there, I'm telling you, it's going to make as much wake as, as a 50-footer. And so I'm not sure the size limitation's going to bias much. But, you know, I'm certainly open to discussing it. The other thing I'll, I'll kind of throw out there is, I think with the exception of Muskegon, I've been in every harbor up and down the Lake Michigan coast. I don't know any harbor that allows on-plane boats in close proximity to marinas, especially marinas where there's transient fueling going on. So, you know, you go to Holland and it's a long way from any marina. Would they allow boats to go on plane? Same thing, just go up the coast, every single harbor. So I don't think, you know, if we do, if we were to head down this path of restricting or severely limiting the amount of wake that boats can produce out in this, what I think is relatively small area of water, we're certainly not going to be doing anything that's not consistent with what all the other harbors have done, you know, in the state. That's just my own opinion. But, you know, so I, you know, I, I think it really should be all a no-wake zone. And if not, just a very limited transit corridor for small boats. But I think even doing that, you're still risking, you're not solving the problem. So that's just where my head's at. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Gregory?
You know, I, I'd like to hear from more people. I'd like to know what Douglas says. I'm leaning towards restriction and a no-wake zone. So I'm kind of between Joe and what we've heard. But again, I, I feel like I don't have enough information from folks. I see it as a safety hazard, like I'm right on board with restrictions. I'd like to see what other people think about making it a no-wake zone. I'd still like to hear what Douglas has to say as well.
Just, oh, go ahead.
Ryan, if we wanted to implement any restrictions of any kind, you still have to have a public hearing, so we would have.
Right.
Opportunities to continue this discussion.
And I'm all for the public hearing. And, and when it, and when it comes to, oh, no, we don't want to bother the sheriff too much. I think that we have to do what's right. And if that means that the, 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 somebody has to work a little bit more and maybe we have to pay a couple more hours if we're doing what's right, and then we're doing what's right. And regardless of services that we may have to increase.
That, that's sort of what I was going to respond to, Mayor. I, I mean, yeah, in an ideal world, you know, you know, the sheriff's marine unit, you know, could quickly determine, you know, what's a 26-foot boat and what's a 22-foot boat, you know? The cleaner probably solution that I think everybody kind of understands in the boating community, even experienced or inexperienced voter, is just a simple no-wake lake. That's simple. It's easy for everyone to understand. I know Holland does a corridor, I think through their narrows, that's, that's 26-foot or below can go on plane, other ones cannot. But that's quite a distance from any of the marinas, I believe. Joel will correct me if I'm wrong. The, the other thing is, you know, I, I like trying to, you know, split the baby on this. I mean, I, I'm sympathetic to that argument to try to, you know, give everybody a little something. But it is an awfully small little lake and harbor area. We are getting more developed around our water fronts. Suddenly you have to wonder what, you know, if you push out the no-wake even further, what the actual wake zone is. And once again, I, you know, the folks that run these businesses that are there on the water every day, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to their argument that it's not even the tubers that are the real problem. It's, it's the boats powering up and powering down, you know? And that's, that doesn't necessarily get solved. So, and, and once again, I, I really think there is an opportunity that we are not capturing as a tri-community area by not fully kind of leveraging, you know, with the CBB, you know, this, you know, our harbor, you know, the Sagatuck Harbor, rather than the Sagatuck Lake. I, I do think there's a real opportunity for, for, for the community, all communities economically, if we did go this route, because it does open up some real interesting possibilities, I think.
Mayor, Mayor North from Douglas has her hand raised. I don't know if she has any perspective or additional conversations she might have had.
Mayor North, please. Can you unmute? Can you unmute yourself?
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
Wouldn't we have anybody that's making comment after and public comments? I mean, out of all due respect to, to Kathy North, I mean, that's, that's, that's our protocol.
I, I tend to agree with Councilman Gardner, but just not to create the precedent.
Okay.
While, while we're having deliberations.
Okay.
I agree.
People catch you.
I think Ryan has a different opinion.
I think it's the discretion of the, the chair to recognize additional folks that might have information to add. But I mean, I, I respect that the council isn't supportive of that, so.
I think her opinion would be valuable.
Does anything to update from the Douglas end of things?
Kathy, can you, can you unmute?
Kathy, can you?
Maybe not. All right. Kathy, raise your, raise your hand later if we can catch you at the public comment, which I think is fairly soon.
With luck. So either way, it sounds like we are looking for more discussion.
It sounds like checking in with Douglas to see where they are.
But I think our idea is to have, have, have a, a open discussion about it, right? Isn't that what the, what this, what we're talking about?
So I think, go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, I would like a little, I'm, I'm here that most of you are saying, yes, I want to, I want to hear a little bit more. I guess the, the question is, do you want to do that through a kind of a joint survey first with Douglas and the township, you know, residents? Or do you prefer that, that we draft, yeah, a more formal resolution, actually schedule this for a public hearing and, and to gather feedback in that format? Would you have to do the survey first, then decide if you want to schedule, do that, take that next step?
With the formal resolution, is it going to be decided within the resolution that it's going to be a no-wake zone? Or can it be looking at restrictions on speeds and, you know? I'm just, I'm just asking how that resolution gets drafted exactly.
Right.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I'm good either way.
That public hearing notice has to be for these types of local watercraft controls. I think we'd have to research that issue a little bit, so.
Okay.
I mean, does, does this, you know, given that this is sort of not really workable if it's not agreed upon between the two communities, generally speaking, because of, you know,
Yeah.
it, it's not going to work if it's not Sagatuck and Douglas. And I think this, this one should focus on Sagatuck and Douglas, I believe, since we're the communities.
Like a joint survey would be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is there value in this iterating through, once we have the conver, conversation? And I, I'm sorry that Kathy can't join.
You know, I got a text from her saying that she did not mean to raise her hand. But, but great conversation.
I mean, I'll, I'll ask our, our rep on the Harbor Authority, is, is, is it worth iterating just the general counsel thoughts and discussion through the Harbor Authority, since it is a multi-jurisdictional entity?
That would be a wonderful way to go about it. It'd be a good starting point because you got right there, you've got all the people sitting there that you could. And it would seem to me that would be a nice way to start.
When do you meet next, Chris?
Every three months.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have the ability maybe to call a special meeting for something like this?
Just to draft the survey?
I would think they would be able to.
I, I just think.
I, I'm not up, I'm not up enough on, on Robert's rules of orders to do that, but I think we could.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's viable or not, but it just, it would seem to be a way that to quickly get sort of, some people that have an interest in this, that have some experience in this to sort of know what's being talked about. The issue is live, you know, and, and I, I would think Douglas would be amenable to that as well.
They've got the authority. They've got the authority behind it. I mean, they're there for these types of things.
Yeah.
The other option would be to staff draft the survey questions. And the point being, you, you would like Harbor Authority to draft, or at least have the discussion on what the survey question should be?
I think, I, I feel like, you know, because we're talking a lot, a number of options and we have a number of opinions around the table. I, for me, I think I would value, you know, folks typically, I mean, sometimes you get assigned the Harbor Authority. I got assigned the Harbor Authority once, you know? But a lot of folks have a passion in it and a real interest in it. And they are plugged into the, the marina and the boating community. They're plugged into, you know, DNR, all these things, the sheriff, you know? So I just wonder if that's a worthwhile bit of input to get for them us. And hopefully Douglas agrees.
If it's not, we shouldn't have Harbor Authority.
This does seem to be right in the, not, not to confuse in the maritime analogies, but it's right in their wheelhouse.
We just want to wait three months until they meet again to get this survey draft.
I agree that if we could expedite it through a special meeting or something.
I agree.
To tackle it. But, you know, once again, it's going to, because this has to go through DNR. This is going to take time. This is, this is not something that is likely to happen.
I think it's been done before and it didn't work. I mean, I think.
It just was ruled against.
Did we ask our legal? If, if there, if we can do a special. Where do you go?
There is. Special meeting.
Can something like the Harbor Authority call for a, a, a quick meeting?
A special meeting.
A special meeting? As a group decide themselves to meet before the regular time? So they only meet.
I would think so.
Yeah, yeah. It's only, you just won't have to.
We've called a special meeting with PPW.
Right.
It's just, you know, and you just have to advertise it. It has to be enough time. It's got to go on paper.
They have their own authority, but I'm assuming there's a mechanism. Why don't we take that as an action item that the city manager could follow up on, Ryan? Is that?
Yeah, we can double-check their inter-local to see if there's any specific language on point related to special meetings. But I, I do want to make sure I'm clear though. The Harbor Authority did discuss this at their meeting last week. Their suggestion was that you do the survey. And the Douglas manager offered to draft the survey. So I, I, I think they probably are more interested in the results before they'd be, you know, more so than maybe, I could be wrong. Maybe they do.
So are you?
I didn't hear that they wanted input on the questions necessarily.
That's what I, that's what I'm just trying to figure out. Okay, so Harbor Authority is good with what you guys come up with as far as the questions.
I would think they would.
Great.
I'm sure there'll be some kind of additions and things like that.
Okay.
From the different entities.
Russ?
Yeah, I'm on board with the survey because I think it's important for us to hear from everybody and that includes people who are professionals that work on this harbor. I would also like to see the questions before the survey is released.
I would too.
I'm good with seeing the questions, of course.
Sounds good. Okay, so I'm going to sum up where I think we are. We will follow up with Douglas to let them know that we are interested in a survey. And they have kindly offered to draft that. And we, council would like the opportunity to review the questions before it goes out.
Sounds great.
All right. Excellent. That takes us to 5F, the resolution providing city councils' public comments to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on north shore of Sagatuck's permit to build a boat launch, which is on page 37 of our packet. Ryan, do you want to tee that up?
Yeah, so you discussed last month that request from the Coastal Dunes Alliance to, you know, consider providing some formal comments to the Army Corps on a request from north shore to construct a boat ramp near the mouth of the Kalamazoo River. Unanimous feedback from council was that you did wish to provide formal comments via a resolution opposing the boat ramp. Since that time, our, our legal counsel has kind of taken your past resolutions opposing the marina and essentially updated it to focus on your specific comments that you made related to the boat launch, and then I think a lot of those comments are captured in the first four or five pages. And then from there, a lot of the language really was, you know, applicable to the, the marina is also applicable here to the boat, boat launch. And so a lot of that language, just for those of you who reviewed the last set of resolutions, will recognize that language. I, I did receive an email from the, the township manager that, that wanted to clarify that, that the, you know, conversation that I had with them and as far as the township and how they were going to handle the boat ramp request was input from staff, not necessarily the official statement of the township. So he asked that to clarify as well, but opened any feedback or changes you might have on the resolution.
Madam Mayor? Yes, Chris?
I have a question. And, and maybe I, I wasn't here for the last one, but who drafted this whole thing?
Our legal counsel.
Our legal counsel did it. The only reason I'm just, it's a question I, I'm, I'm a little hesitant because of all the history that's in here. That we're kind of, when we sign this, it means we, we stand behind all that. And everybody's comfortable that this is exactly how it went down.
That's correct. Speak through your resolutions.
Okay. No, I, I just meant with all the history and everything that's in here, the purchasing of land in eighteen, nineteen eight or eighteen eighty-nine and all that, that it's all.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good then.
Any other questions? Chris, Ryan or Russ, are you looking like you're going to talk?
I'm at port.
Okay. Great, so this will be on the agenda on Monday. We're on the downhill slope now. We're on G Culver Street Parking Lot Operation Agreement. Page sixty.
Okay, let me get there.
Okay, Ryan.
Yeah, so kind of back with a Culver Lots agreement, essentially the same as last year, just with updates to the specific dates that they're, they're, they're planning on for the, the bonus days, but otherwise the, the hours. And, and plan up staffing of the lot by the school remains the same and, and the agreement remains the same in that we would split the proceeds fifty-fifty. The representative from the school did approach us a few months ago, kind of wondering that there was a vendor that had come forth that, that was expressing some interest in helping them with the, the school lots and, and kind of having like an automated system on, on, on days that they offer that to the, the public. And so we, you know, had some discussion. They wondered if we were interested in the same and whether or not if we went to that particular type of a system, if we'd still be able to, you know, share dollars from the lot and, you know, we kind of discussed essentially that, you know, council's kind of established looking at parking as an overall priority, and I think that a conversation related to automation and, and any direction that you might want to have on that is probably better for that, that overall conversation, not, you know, diving into a ton of work just into this lot. So for this summer, obviously, we're, we're planning on the same and happy to answer any questions.
With the, the fee increase going up to ten dollars, it used to be five dollars, and it went up to ten dollars.
I remember monthly, it's been ten dollars for two years.
Oh, for two years. I'm sorry, thank you. And, and it was five dollars previously. I remember when that went up. Are we getting less people park in there? Because if you look at twenty-one, twenty-two and those numbers are around fifty, fifty-six, the numbers aren't really reflective of, of that. And I'm just curious, are those the right numbers or I, I mean, I assume they are. It appears that less people are using that parking. Do we have any numbers on that or?
Yeah, I mean, they provide us with, with slips and account for all the, the dollars and.
Right.
So I mean, that's, these are the dollars that, that went into the bank. And so I'm not sure, I guess I could ask follow up with Liz to see if they're seeing like, you know, less periods where it's actually full and they're not maximizing it. Maybe I can certainly check with her on that.
Just out of curiosity, and the reason being is twenty-two is fifty-six and twenty-four is fifty-six. You would think that.
Double.
Yeah, at, at least double, or I mean, or at least three fourths or something would be, would be an increase. So that's what I'm just, and that's just Culver Lot, right? That doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just like, like I said, that looks like what I, what it looks like to me, there's half as many people that use that lot and it looks just as busy as it always does to me.
Oh. There is also a thing with the beach passes that the residents can park in that lot, so that's free. I don't know if it was like, I don't know the history on that before.
Yeah, I can provide a little bit of history on that. I think that's the city responsibilities, provide parking permit stickers, so any city resident with a P on there can park for free there when the. So and that's actually something that, as a former parking co-captain down there, I speak from experiences, that was something that we always had to tell people, if they have a P, they can park without a charge. The, so kind of the interesting thing here is that, and I can't speak to the volumes, I can tell you when I, when I've worked that lot, it's always.
Right.
You know, but it, it just depends on, you know, people coming and spend a couple hours and go grab a bite to eat and then they leave.
Sure.
So it's kind of hard to tell. The thing that I think is probably most impactful to me is that the city or the, excuse me, the school will no longer be able to use what was formerly the bank parking lot.
Right.
So that's going to have a financial impact on them. And as I was looking at this, I was thinking, and I don't know if there's an answer to this question about how the fifty percent divide was initially decided, I'm, you know, this is going to be a hit to. I tell you, if you ever worked that, I think maybe a couple of folks here at the table have worked those lots. When they learn for the schools, they're frequently throwing in an extra twenty bucks or something to keep the change or whatever, because they really appreciate the fact that it's for the schools. I would even like to see at this point, because they're going to lose some revenue from the old bank parking lot, that maybe we think about only taking twenty-five percent for, may, maybe just a nominal processing fee. Because Nikki will have to, and Nikki will have to process the deposits and do some work, so there's some, so there's some man hours involved. But really, if this is to benefit the school and their programs, I'd like to see maybe more going to it, considering the fact that they've lost, or they're going to be losing a little bit this year.
I'd like to see that do, but then to make sure that that twenty-five percent is enough to cover maintenance of that parking lot as well.
Yeah. Just an idea, just occur to me.
I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind seeing something like that. Schools need it.
I look forward to it being automated at some point, to be honest with you. This is a great fundraiser, but it's really hard to get volunteers, as Liz Wilson will tell you, it's, it's like, you know, all of the organizations that are involved, it's like requiring parents to, you know, sit at the lots because we can't just let the kids do it. So it's, it's always just a challenge to get volunteers for some of these lots, and I think probably the numbers, I'm just guessing, are that sometimes we didn't have volunteers there that day.
Oh, right, sure.
The only way we make money is if volunteers are there, and that means the city, the school. The only way we make money is if we have volunteers there. So.
Good point.
At the risk of being called out for a conflict of interest, given that I've got a middle schooler. You know, I'm, I'm all for finding a way to support the school. You know, but Mayor Pro Temp is correct, you know, it, it is challenging to, to, to staff it. And actually, the fees, what I've heard anecdotally, my wife has done many shifts there. She says people rarely question the ten dollar fee. They're happy, and I think Councilman Gardner would agree, they're happy to support the school and particularly when they're visiting from some of the larger cities, they don't see ten dollars to park in Sagatuck is, is a very big deal, so.
Joe?
I have no issue, would love to see more money go to the schools. But to that point, ten dollars, from what I've seen from other coastal towns is a bargain. Maybe we give them extra money by raising the fees and let them keep the, the uptake on it or something along those lines. But again, maybe a broader discussion when we get into parking, because, you know, there's a lot of automated solutions out there that actually may drive more revenue too.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah.
I will go on the record as opposing automated parking systems at that lot. I just think it sends a wrong signal about our community and about what we're about. But the comment I want to make is the biggest criticism I hear about the fee is why can't I pay electronically? That has been the biggest thing is fewer people carry cash, and that's something that I've suggested to Liz Wilson, that find a way to Venmo or find a way to be able to make people make electronic payments. That, but that's not our, that's not our thing to decide, but that's the biggest criticism I've heard is.
Isn't that a form of automation?
Well, no, it'd be having a phone. You could actually Venmo money to, to an account, but it's, but it's not an automated, you would still have to have a physical.
Still have to have volunteers there.
Or have a square, or have a square or something to.
Right.
That's, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Chris, do you have anything?
No, I, I think the discussion is, is well-needed. I, I, when Gregory brought that up about the difference, it was like, well, why isn't that if we double the price, why wouldn't that happen? So, and then I appreciate Councilmember Stanton's, it's because of the volunteers. I would agree that if we can give them money back, that they're going to lose over the bank parking lot, we do it.
So it sounds like there's a consensus to, to give the schools a greater cut.
That's nice, and I like it.
Ryan?
I mean, I, I would just would, would say as your, I, I respect where the council's coming from, from wanting to support the school's perspective. I, I think we also see where your capital improvement plan's at and our very real needs and, and, you know, your Culver Lot's going to have very real needs in the future. And I mean, these are, I mean, we have real dollars that we need to spend on, on things as well, and I think that's, you know, it's a good win-win right now with the school's able to, to make some money and provide the volunteers and raise some money and, and, and we're able to get some revenue out of the, the lot that we have that's existing. So I mean, given all of the needs that, that you see, I'm not sure that I would surely as staff recommend that you change this, but that's, that's a decision that you have.
What about if you increase the price?
Well, I mean, it's a good question. What about, I mean.
I like going to fifteen.
Raise it to fifteen.
Raise it to fifteen and still go fifty-fifty.
Is that up to us to raise it?
No, it's not up to the city to raise it.
Right, that's what I saw.
School's decision to raise that rate. Well, I think the city sets the cap. We don't, yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't set the rate. We can cap it, but we don't set it.
Well, I mean, we're signing an agreement that, that specifies the rate, so I, I think this, I mean, this is our lot, we own it, so I think we do have some say in it. But I can, I can talk with Liz and kind of find out, get some more details maybe about what they're seeing as far as staffing and difficulties there, maybe some lost revenue, what their thoughts are on maybe raising it to fifteen and I can circle back on, I should be able to talk with her for your meeting on Monday and we can.
Be great, Ryan.
Yeah, to Councilmember Gardner's point, I think people would find it more palatable if the school did take on the, the Venmo, the PayPal, whatever option, because I mean, everyone, when you pay with, pay with something on your phone, it's, you know, it, it just doesn't hurt as much for whatever reason.
Right. Right.
But that's for, as you pointed out, that's for them.
They can do a tip to the schools on it to, to boot.
Oh, yeah, add tip.
Yes.
And that would go to the schools.
Yeah, that'd be cool. Okay, anything else on this? We were still on that downward slope. Which is the Spear Street Launch Ramp Management Agreement, which is page sixty-five.
So again, here, the Star Sagatuck still would kind of be responsible for oversight and monitoring the ramp to make sure that, that folks pay and then folks are able to pay at their, their office. We did see, I mean, last year there were some concerns that the revenue had, had been down, but we did see quite a bit of an uptake. And I double checked this, this is actually, these are the gross revenues. You know, prior years up to now. So we saw an increase, which was good. Mr. Steele's willing to continue to have his business handle this and make the bathrooms available for folks. And I think Scott and I have talked about maybe getting a new sign down there for the, for the launch, it's looking a little tired and, and so just kind of replacing that. And I think Scott's looked at some other improvements for that, that area as well, just to kind of clean it up a little bit, but otherwise the agreement remains the same.
Questions?
Scott, can I ask you a question? I mean, the dock there is pretty janky. With the low water levels, how far do you have to go before you run out of cement to be able to back into that?
Yeah, I used the boat launch like a week ago.
Okay.
Myself, and I had no problems. I mean, there was an issue with like stepping down from the steel deck dock. You know, but.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah. I, I never had an issue with, you know, dropping off the edge of that, the concrete slab that's in the water for the ramp, is that, that's the part that you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can do a little bit of recon on that too and just see, you know, probably add some sort of marking to the dock or something to let people know, like, here's the edge of it.
Yeah.
That was my question, whether or not we flag the end of it so people don't drop their trailers off into the muck and lose an axle, so.
Yeah, I would just echo the comments made by the manager, that Spear Street Boat Launch needs a lot of help. It does, it, it looks worse than before. It's, it's not been paid attention to for a while. The other thing that we might want to do is that when we put up a new sign, which I fully support, maybe we put a little QR code or something on there, we say if, if you have some comments or thoughts about the operation of this launch, here's a way to do it, because I think it'd be good to get some feedback, because a lot of times that's used rear, rear, even in the morning, late at night. I mean, there's not, this weekend, there was a boat that was being pulled out at like eleven PM when I was walking the dogs. So there's no one around to collect money or do anything at that hour, and I'm not suggesting we do an automated payment, but we could find a way to.
I was going to be helpful, just say that, actually, going back to our Culver Streets conversation.
Thanks, Scott.
That, you know, it might be useful if you did have a QR code that people could pay on their phone, that might actually increase the honor system, if you will, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, how many times have you shown up at a boat launch and you don't have seven bucks on you? You know, I mean, I, I mean, you just don't, you don't have the cash. But I think, you know, you're more than happy to scan a code and double click on your iPhone to pay.
You might get more money.
It might make us more money.
We could suggest tipping too.
There you go.
There's nobody.
We could put students there saying.
That's right. Chris, did you have your?
No, I agree with all of us.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, takes us to the twenty-twenty-five Boat Slip Management Agreement, page seventy-one.
And no more questions.
Okay, I'm still here. You can say that, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, this, this remains the same. Sergeant Marina is willing to, to continue to kind of operate the transient slips and, and handle the good customer service for them. If you have any questions, Kyle actually happens to be here, but otherwise the splits remain the same and.
You will in this, in like three minutes, is my vote.
I think they do a great job with managing this.
Yeah, thank you. For managing this.
Great, so this will also be on the agenda on Monday. So that takes us to public comment number six. I'm going to look, Fred, can you, who's your name, Fred? Okay. Will you, well, come make your comment. I'm sorry you've had to wait so long. It's entertaining, right?
My main, my main issue is the Park Oval Beach.
Okay.
I metal detect.
Okay.
It's a hobby. Give me some exercises and stuff. And it's seventy-five dollars for a season ticket. Because I'm a resident of Sagatuck. I'm also a dissimilar American back. I just would like to, I talked to Ryan, and I'd like to have the council to see it in their hearts, to give me a free pass for the year. And that's what I asked for.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
If it's all right, Madam Mayor, I could elaborate a little bit too, and Brad also kind of had a suggestion that he, that he shared, if it's all right, that I, I share a little bit more of our conversation. You know, his thought was that maybe on like Memorial Day, that we have some sort of policy that says that if you show a, you know, veteran's card of some sort or an active military card, that maybe on that day, that, that we also allow folks to not charge that, that vehicle or something along those lines.
Sure, you didn't use three minutes, so we'll let you, you can speak from, well, no, I guess you need to speak from the podium so everybody can hear you.
Military holidays. I mean, Purple Heart Day. Metal of fire. You know, there's not a lot in, well, May, May. May is one of the month. There's four or five days in May, the Silver Heart. Spouses Day. And that's for spouses or lost husbands, children, home. Patriots Day, Armed Forces Day, that's May's having teeth coming up. Memorial Day, Tony's Day. And you know, June is another big month. You got anniversary of World War Two veterans. You know, I don't know if any of you are veterans.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of, a lot of veteran days or holidays that we celebrate for veterans.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. All right, Sergeant Marine? Kyle?
I appreciate y'all looking at the Sona Week Zone again. That's near and dear to our hearts. I've been working on that for eleven years now quietly. I've tried a few times to go to the meetings, the Harbor Committee, and unfortunately, they didn't have enough members at the time. So the two I went to got canceled. We had members, so Marina go there, so they elected me as the spokesperson. And Rick was also at the time the spokesperson also. So that's something that we will continue to push and whatever you guys can do to, to get that out to the public. I'd like to hear what they say, as you would. That will be the deciding factor, and I think it also. And then secondly, for the agreement, the only thing that changed on there was the dates. And we will look at that before we'll sign that, because that has, looks like it's lengthened out two months on either end. So we'll, we'll take a look at that first, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
My name is Kyle.
Bethany?
Rissimo?
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I, I just wanna, I, I just want to make it very clear with the three oh four property on Lucy Street. This is not about quit claims, it's not about transfers, it's not about LLCs, it's not about any of that. Because the change of ownership took place nine months prior to the August cap, okay? Back in December of twenty-three, the August cap was, or the cap was August of twenty-four. We acknowledge we messed up, okay? We, you know, the, part of the responsibility was on myself as the management company and as the owners for not seeing this. And in eighteen years, I've never had to deal with it. And if we did have to deal with it, we would just reapply because there wasn't a cap, okay? But it's never happened, but, but we acknowledge it. But I really feel in some way, shape or form, some of the onus should be on the city as well. Because we went thirteen months since December of twenty-three to January, when our fire inspection was due. That's how this all came to light. It was never flagged, back to Lauren's question, it was never flagged. We, you know, some of that should be on you guys, if we're putting in the, you're putting in the rules like, hey, heads up, there was a change of ownership. Yes, it was in the fine print in the application, but some of that should be on the city as well. Because again, I could have easily walked over here for nine months, two hundred and seventy days. I'm right there, I could have come over, turned in this in, and this would be a non-issue. So I, I'm asking that you, that you take that in consideration. It's over a year from December to Jan, just January. You know, we would, we would have replied. And then lastly, in the last workshop, you know, you guys considered looking at some unique circumstances case by case, like, like this one. This was clearly caught in the crosshairs of this transition time, okay? There's, there's just no pull punches here, okay? This is a good family, he's been here fifty-four years, has done everything the right way. I'm asking that you still consider these handful of cases, like the gentleman with the heart surgery. I don't think there's a whole bunch of them. I don't think you're gonna open Pandora's box by considering a handful of cases that were in the midst of all this during this time of transition to consider this, okay? We are owning some of the responsibility in here, but dang it all, I just feel like some of it should come from the city too. If we're gonna put all these rules in place, I think it goes to Alleghan, why didn't Alleghan let the city know? And why didn't Luke or whoever was before Luke say, hey, you guys gotta get on top of this? Our bad, I would have walked right over and taken care of it. That's, that's all I'm asking. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Anyone else in the room? Anyone on the phone or Zoom?
Hi, this is Kathleen Quick.
Yeah, Catherine, go ahead.
Let me just, hi, this is Kate. I apologize, I, I ended up starting a paint job and then just had to finish it. I appreciate the conversation and just want to ask a clarifying question. So I think that there is a way for the people, if they're just those two owners, to either put it in their trust or their LLC, whatever makes sense, as long as we're not talking about any other people involved. Is that, did I understand that right?
So to clarify, with what we talked about today, you can drop somebody from an ownership position in an LOC or whatever, but you can't add people. And the point of that is, is then you kind of get into a in perpetuity situation.
So.
This really is a Q and A, so if you want to connect with us after the meeting, we can do that.
That would be great. Should I come over there or?
You can, or you can give one of us a call or shoot an email.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh huh. Anyone else? All right. That takes us to public or the correspondence, and we had the letter in our packet. So we get to council comments. Joe, would you like to start?
I'm all for supporting our veterans. Making concessions, whether that's at our parks or whatever, I think it's a great discussion topic. We should take up on one of our workshops, and I enjoy getting your point of view. So thank you for that, and thank you for the good dialogue tonight.
Gregor?
I'll echo that. I wouldn't have a problem with working on something to allow our veterans easier access to our parks. I think that's worthy. And other than that, tomorrow's the first day of spring. And so we're all looking forward to it, and other than that, no.
I would, Brad, thank you for staying with us for the meeting. Appreciate you staying for the, to the bitter end of this one. Yeah, I'm, I'm also looking forward to finding a way to help veterans and particularly disabled veterans. I think, you know, what we do at Oval Beach, you know, is it's about a parking fee. And, you know, if, if it's, we have an accessibility issue for disabled veterans to access the park. I think we should maybe be looking at a way to make it more accessible to folks like you. And once again, thank you for your service, sir.
I'm just great discussions today, and I don't have anything else to add.
Chris?
Uh, no, good meeting, and thank you, Mr. Donovan, being here today, and thank you for your service. I do have a question. What is the, what is the time and date and location of the next Tri-Community Wildlife Commission? I've had a neighbor ask me. When is it?
Scott knows that.
The committee meets once a month on Wednesdays at six PM. They have not determined the date of the next meeting. I have not seen a, a note from the city manager on that. We've, they've had to cancel before, so I, I have not seen a date yet for the April meeting.
Okay, because I, again, my neighbor has asked me twice now, and I said I'd send a text message to one of our council members and have not got a response. So as soon as we get that, I'd, I'd appreciate getting that so I can tell her.
Yes, as soon as I, it's the Douglas manager that sets those up, but I can certainly forward that to the council.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, that was it.
Chris?
Thank you for your comments. My husband's a veteran, appreciate your, your service as always. And I think it's a good idea to work, try to work something there to benefit our veterans. Good discussion with everybody, and hello, spring.
Hello, spring, yeah. I don't think I have anything to add, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Before we all leave, so we don't get stuck into a policy.